It is now eighteen hundred hours. I'm gonna call this regular council meeting twenty twenty five dash eighteen to order. The invocation will be given by Pastor David Drexler of Peace Lutheran Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Mike Hammer. Please rise.
Hard to believe this is the seventh year that I have stood before this council for opening prayer. It has been an honor. Uh, the time has come to move on to the promised land of Ocean Isle Beach, North Carolina. There I plan to uh open up the local fishing theater uh each morning. And at sunrise, I will keep this city and its leadership in my daily prayers. I enlist in your honor. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you as children who need your presence. This evening, we ask that you pour out your Holy Spirit and become our Emmanuel. God with us. Pour out your spirit of wisdom and guidance. Pour out your spirit of compassion and understanding. But most of all, oh Lord, we ask that you pour out your spirit of love. May all our works be done for the benefit of your glorious creation. Tonight, let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, our Lord, our rock, and our redeemer. Amen.
Madam Lefler?
Mayor Medina?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Present.
Councilman Johnson is absent. Councilman Hammer? Councilman Landervan?
Present.
Mr. Morton?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morton? Agenda revisions?
I do not have any agenda revisions.
Thank you. Madam Smith?
No, sir.
Madam Lefler?
Yes, Mayor. The staff recommendation on item four under new business has been revised to have discussion and receive direction from city council.
Thank you. Council, any revisions?
No, Mayor.
Seeing none, we are now on uh proclamations and uh or recognitions. I'm gonna ask Mr. Greg Smith and Sandy Emmerich to come on up. So as most of you know, we've, we had the Mayor's Ball, the Success Room Mayor's Ball, and the, the beneficiary of that ball was Space Coast Discovery. And these are the leaders of Space Coast Discovery, but it is more about serving our children and our community. And with that, we were able to raise, and the drum roll please, forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. You know, this will benefit all the children in Palm Bay and in our surrounding area. And it is about giving back to our community, but our children are our most precious resource. And uh Greg, I'd like for you to share a little bit about what Space Coast Discovery is all about and, and what you do.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Greg Smith, the CEO uh of the school, and thankfully so, because I love it every day. Our school is a special needs school, so most of our kids find it difficult to go to public schools. Brevard County has great public schools, but when the child needs to get up and walk around a little bit, needs to fidget, they're being told they're disruptive. At our school, that's not disruptive, that's norm. And so we try to make sure that every kid gets to be able to feel comfortable in school. We still, people will say, well, do you really teach school there? Yes, we do. We teach our kids math and science and reading. And we track them. We have national tracking, so we wanna make sure that we adhere to the school. But you know, if a child needs to stand up during class and walk around for five minutes, they get a timeline. They get to walk around, burn off some of that energy outside of class. They come back, now they're ready to study again. We allow the uh parents to choose uh therapy companies, behavioral therapy, occupational uh speech therapy, so that the children get their therapies right in school uh during the day. So when they go home, they can go and play, spend time with their families, they don't have another appointment to go to. That also really keeps the children regulated and focused on that education. So I tell you, Mayor, thank you so much to the city, wonderful city of Palm Bay, that is doing so much for us, and this money is gonna be well, well received and well used for the benefit of the kids. So thank y'all from the bottom of our hearts.
Listen, I just wanted to share. It took the entire community to come out and raise this kind of money. It was not only our citizens, but it was our employees that participated in purchasing a ticket. But I want you to understand something. Space Coast Discovery is a ground where we should be sowing a seed, and it is fertile ground. And I truly believe that whatever man sows, so shall he reap. And that is a principle that we should all be living by. To honor and sow a seed in the grounds of our children, our most precious resource, it is worth your investment. So thank you. Listen, this is, this is a problem, Greg, but it is forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. But I also wanna take this opportunity to commend Christina Born. Christina, you've been a valuable person since I got into office, and I truly appreciate your labor and all your sacrifice in putting this together. So without the team, without Christina, we really couldn't afford to do this. But we're so grateful for their sacrifice because of your sacrifice. This is the amount of money that we're investing in Space Coast Discovery, so thank you. And thank each and every one of you. So Christina, provide the real check. That's the real check. Come on in, Christina. I'd like to take a picture with you as well.
Absolutely.
Come on in. Come on. Come on in, Jack. Come on in here, buddy. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulate council.
Hey, guys.
That young man donated too. God bless him. God bless you. Say, say hi. Congratulations. Did you congratulate these young men? Did you shake their hand? Okay. They were a big part of this. I'm just the face, man. These guys are the ones. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I'll be there. I'll be there. We're gonna work something out. Glory to God. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. God bless you. So now, this is exciting for me. Most of you know that I'm a baseball man. Uh, I love the game of baseball. Uh, it's been a sad time for the New York Yankees. But I'm still a baseball fan. I'm still a Yankee fan. I grew up in Yankee Stadium, uh getting free bats, wooden bats, and using those to play baseball in my Little League career. And I, I get excited when I see teams in Palm Bay excel. And now today, we're gonna recognize the Palm Bay East Little League thirteen and fourteen-year-old All-Star team. Come on up, guys. You know, I know that they wouldn't understand this, but in my day, we played Little League with wooden bats. That's how old I am. Come on in, guys. Congratulations, Coach. Way to go, sir. Congratulations. Way to go. Come on, guys, smile, man. You guys, you guys are our champs, man. We're really proud of what you've done. Palm Bay East rocks. Come on. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Hey, Coach, good job.
Thank you.
Way to go. I, I, I know what it took, and I'm really proud of you bringing this to our city, man.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
So Palm Bay East Little League All-Stars, District Two League Champions in twenty twenty-five. It is hereby recognized by the Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, whereas Palm Bay East Little League thirteen and fourteen-year-old All-Star team has made history, securing district championship with an undefeated five-and-oh record. This marks the very, come on, yeah! I'm so excited, guys. This marks the first time a Palm Bay East team has claimed the district title since way back in twenty seventeen. I was a lot younger then. Whereas the team showcased exceptional talent throughout the tournament, dominating opponents, impressive wins against Palm Bay West, twenty-seven to one. Greater West Melbourne, nine to six, and I love this one. Vieira Suntree, seven to zero. They got shut out. Victories over Old Galley Little League, seven to three, and a thrilling three-to-two extra inning finish. And whereas adding to the excitement, many of the tournament games were hosted right here at the Teams Connect Park. Uh, first, for District Two, the championship game was held on Sunday at, on June fifteenth um at Mexico, Max K. Rhodes Park in the, in West Melbourne. Whereas the roster includes Levi Albert. I want you to raise your hand when I, I call your name, gentlemen. Yeah, Levi Albert. Give it up for Levi! Jay Santos. Was, not him? EJ McLean. Liam Butler. Kason Wiles. Irenarius Granville. Alright, you knew I was gonna get fucked on that one, dude. Brayden Kayler. Chase Cates. Connor Simenek. Simenek. And last but not least, trust me, the coaches do their share here. Coaches Ronnie Kayler, TJ Sherwood, and team manager Chris Cates. Now therefore, I, Ron Medina, Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, by virtue of said authority of this office, do hereby recognize Palm Bay East Little League All-Stars, District Two, League Champions in twenty twenty-five. And here I command, hereby command the team for its great sportsmanship, enthusiasm, and all-around good playing. And we ask all our citizens to recognize the accomplishments of each and every player, as well as their coaches, for spectacular winning season. We are all proud of them. And when this here, I set my hand, um the seal of the City of Palm Bay to be affixed the seventh day of August. Coach, come on up. Mr. Team Manager, congratulations. Really proud of what you accomplished, brother. The hard work, I really am, sir. Let's take it. Let's go, let's go to Williamsburg next year. Go ahead, sir.
Alright, so I've got something written down, 'cause obviously I kept my number. Alright, so good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Chris Cates. I have the honor of being one of the coaches for Palm Bay East Junior All-Stars baseball team. I'm here with my fellow coaches, our players and their families. And we are so proud to be standing before this, before you this evening. The season was truly special. These boys worked hard from day one, putting in the hours at practice, pushing each other, improving, and learning what it means to play as a team. Their dedication, the sportsmanship paid off in the best way possible. With our team bringing home the district championship, but more than wins, it was the, the way they supported each other and stayed focused and made us proud as coaches. We also couldn't have done this without the incredible support of our parents from early morning practices, traveling for games. They were every step of the way. Sharing in the stands, helping with team needs, and making sure these boys had every opportunity to succeed. On behalf of our team, I want to sincerely thank the city, the Palm Bay, for recognizing these young athletes tonight. It means a lot for them to see their hard work and dedication celebrated in this way. These boys are not only great ballplayers, but also great young members of our community. And this recognition will be something they will remember for years to come. Thank you again for your time and your support in youth sports in our city. We are proud to represent Palm Bay East, and we look forward to building on this success and the seasons ahead. Thank y'all, everybody. This is uh amazing, amazing opportunity to uh coach for Palm Bay East Little League. Uh, we had an amazing season. Uh, I wish we could go back and do it again, just because it really was that fun. And uh, thank all y'all for everything y'all did. We greatly, greatly appreciate it. And thank you, the city, for uh supporting us and giving us the field and everything.
Now I want you to share a little bit about the thirteen, fourteen-year-old, right? 'Cause it is a year transition for every ballplayer, right? So you wanna touch a little bit on that, the dynamics of the field and the whole night?
You know, they, they go from uh-
Go ahead, tell the audience, brother.
But they go from the, well, let me get uh Coach Tony up here. Tony, can you better explain the field differences?
Come on, Coach.
How you doing, guys? So yeah, so basically, they go through um a, a huge difference from pitching at forty-six feet to sixty feet. You know, from going to, you know, to, to ninety feet is, is distance between each bases. You know, so that's a huge difference from a small field to a big field. And just to have Chris and, and TJ and everybody here kind of lead the way, kind of not give up on them, but the way the coaches kind of treat them like young men, not like boys. And that's what they want, because the coaches treat them like men, they act like men, and they play like men. And for us, we're just proud that that transition wasn't a big deal, because they fought through it. And we were here on the weekends, and also Chris has his own indoor facility. So if, you know, if it was raining outside, we could actually practice on the property and, and, and hone in on our skills. So overall, though, um I just wanna say thank you for uh, to the mayor and for the city for supporting um our league. And I think personally, and not being biased, but I think Connect is the most beautiful park in the county. I'm just saying that, you know, 'cause it's, it's a truth. So, thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, are you the team line? Come on over. So we have certificates also for each and every ballplayer and every coach as well. We really appreciate the, the accomplishments that you guys have achieved. But I wanted it to high, it, it has to be highly noted that when a ballplayer goes from sixty feet to ninety feet, it's a whole different dynamic for those of us that have played the game of baseball. And I'm extremely proud of each and every one of you. May God bless you. May God continue to bless our great city. There you go, man. Hurrah. We're gonna take a picture. Show that proclamation. We're gonna take a picture with that big coach. Hey, guys, surround this. Make sure we get that band somehow. Can we get that? Come on, come on up, Coach. Hey, hold on one second. One second. Coach, come on down here. You know, Deputy Mayor's still coaching at Palm Bay East Little League, and he wants to come sit, come stand right alongside these great ballplayers, man. Come on up. Come on in here, man, your big lug. Listen up, guys. Awesome. God bless you, guys. Good job, Coach. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, man. What'd you play? Pitcher? Shortstop? Oh. What'd you play? Left field? What'd you play? Second? Center field? You got wheels, huh? Thank you. Thank you for your service. God bless you, man. God bless you. For, for the fall? Usually get, usually get the- Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I think Greg had something he forgot to say.
There was something we forgot. I didn't realize we had brought this. And Mayor, with you and your team, if you'll show the people what we got.
No, you showed the people.
This is coming, this is coming from the school for the mayor. I, I didn't realize that we had brought it. Wasn't paying attention, right? And then we're signed by kids, teachers, everyone else to just say how, how much we appreciate it.
Really excited. Really excited for that Palm Bay East Little League, guys. Way to go. Outstanding. So now we are on uh public comments. And uh, just so that everyone is aware, pursuant to council's policy now, the public comments portion of this meeting will not be broadcast or streamed live. Deputy Mayor, uh comment cards, please. Ben Eckhart. Consent, council members, uh you wish to pull any items? I'll start.
Yes, uh I wanna pull item number five.
Item number five? Anyone else? Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass a consent agenda with the exception of item number five.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Landervan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Passes four zero. We're now on public hearings, item number one. Ms. Smith?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Title Three, Administration, Chapter thirty-four, Human Resources, Subchapter, General Provisions, by enacting post-employment restrictions and standards of conduct for former municipal employees, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for inclusion in the City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Madam Smith?
Yes, Mayor. This is the second reading of the ordinance that provides the post-employment restrictions. The ordinance's primary, uh, primary functions is to prohibit employees from appearing before city boards uh for compensation. And after um separation from the city for two years, there's also provisions related to contracting with the city for, um, for senior management employees. The senior management employees are specifically defined as the city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, deputy city attorney, city clerk, deputy city clerk, city engineer, and department heads. Also provides restrictions for those that have been on the selection committee for uh the award of contracts over five hundred thousand dollars, improvise a process for council to grant a waiver uh of the restriction by a majority vote.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, Deputy Mayor, you wanted to add anything, sir?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Any questions, council from staff?
Alright. Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that there's something in there that says um that these people have to be some kind of management within the company. Um, 'cause I do know there are people that will go and get regular blue-collar jobs for these companies, and I don't want that to, to um stop the company from being able to um, stop the company from being able to put in for it. I mean, if, you know, if, if they're working at a, at a counter at, at, at some place, I, I think that should be allowed.
Yes, the-
Well, if I could just make comment, there, there's gonna be a lot of what-if situations or unintended consequences that could possibly arise from this. There's a waiver process. That's in the document, that they could submit a waiver process, and it would go in front of us to, to grant that waiver.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
And beyond the waiver process, it does specifically list the uh, uh employees as the ordinances currently, um, which were approving based upon Deputy Mayor's revision last uh meeting, was that it is targeted towards those senior management employees, which are the upper management employee, uh, these department heads, you know, charter officers. And also, it um includes the uh city engineer, of course, because the city engineer is significant once we actually get one again on some, some of these projects. But it, it, it tends to confine it to the most um higher level positions, and there is a waiver process to address those, uh, any issues that may come forth.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um, anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Speaking to the general public? Yes, sir. Step forward. State your name and state your comments, sir.
Mark Miller, eight-nine-eight Nelson Avenue, Palm Bay. Uh, it just came up, 'cause you mentioned charter officers, so uh being on the charter review commission, that doesn't count, right? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I don't have to wait four years to, although I love my full-time pastor job, it's awesome. Somebody, you know, may, may have a, a great offer, so I just wanted to make sure it didn't apply to-
No. Actually, it doesn't say charter officers. It lists the actual positions, the city clerk, city magistrate, city attorney.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
I'll give you a motion, Mayor. Pass it on.
Now, second.
I've got a, I've got a motion by Councilman Landervan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four zero. We are now on, back to consent, item number five. Councilman Landervan?
Yes, Mayor. So um, so my understanding of the shiphousing is that it goes in, I guess, three-year, year intervals. And so our last um LHAP was passed before we were elected. So I guess my, my first question is, uh, can, can staff kind of explain the LHAP a little bit, since our last, you know, initiative was before we were elected? And then what does this revision do to that, so that we can have a better understanding of what we're voting on?
Thank you, Councilman Landervan. Mr. Morton, would you call up?
Yes. Jason. I asked Jason DeLorenzo to come up, hopefully explain tonight.
Jason DeLorenzo.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Jason DeLorenzo, Assistant City Manager. Um, sir, the local housing assistance plan, um, or is the, the L-HAP, as it's called, um, is the process by which we have to follow um to provide assistance to low, a very low- to low, a very low and low modern income homeowners for rehabilitation of, uh, their homes. They have to live in a specific area. They have to meet income criteria that's all laid out in the L-HAP. And, um, you're right, it's a three-year process and this is the final year of that process. For the specific changes here, in section two, uh, the request is to increase the maximum award for purchase assistance with rehabilitation, uh, and owner-occupied rehabilitation strategies. So those are two of the strategies that are listed in the L-HAP to, um, in, uh, increase the award maximum from seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand. So projects are costing more now. We're finding it hard to, um, make projects work with, within the seventy-five thousand dollar maximum. So it's just to raise it to a hundred thousand. Um, also in section two, um, there's a forgivable loan. That, uh, is how most of these projects work. And we're changing that forgiveness program from thirty years to twenty years, which is consistent with, uh, the other municipalities and, uh, Brevard County for these types of programs. And then, um, also in section three, um, City Resolution twenty twenty-five eleven provided building permit fee reductions for affordable housing projects. And we've incorporated that ordinance that you passed into the L-HAP as well. So those are the three changes, uh, that are contemplated in this update. All of them were approved by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation that, uh, runs the housing program for ship.
Okay. And the actual funding for ship, is that money from the state?
State how? It's state funding that comes from dock stamps on housing purchases and refinances.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard again, Jason. I need a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilman Landerman, seconded by Councilman Hammond. Any additional comments, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passage four zero. We are now on procurements. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, all Mayor City Council. I pulled this off consent just to talk about it briefly. This is a, a great program. It's secured and placed pipe rehabilitation services. The reason I wanted just to discuss it real quick is, you know, we do get a lot of comments, seen a lot of comments in the, in the three months I've been here about what are we doing proactively? Not just on the budget, but to secure our sewer infrastructure, to prevent future breaches, leaks and, and, and issues. Cured and placed pipe is a great method to rehabilitate existing pipelines without e- existing excavations. And the benefits of that, of course, are the cost savings to our community. It's, uh, uh, cleanliness can happen relatively quickly instead of projects that take weeks or months. Definitely reduce disruption of services. It extends the lifespan, uh, often by fifteen years or more. And of course, it's proactive environmental stewardship at its best. It reduces the infiltration and inflow, the INI and other, other things leaving, um, into our water table, settle lines with our, with our goals of trying to be proactive. And I want to let the community know that that is done and these pipes are, are evaluated for this program through various, uh, technologies. There is a fiscal funding impact of approximately one point six million dollars annually for this, uh, project or, or up to that amount as to actually, uh, actual pace of work can proceed. And this proactive maintenance accounts for about seven percent of the capital improvement, uh, uh, budget. And converts thanks about four percent of the total total budget. So we are making an investment in securing, upgrading and safeguarding infrastructure.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Carry on.
Yeah, I did have a question. Once the pipes are done, is there any kind of certification or warranty that we get? Should one of the pipes that get done fail?
That is a great technical question that I did not have the answer to. Not with, not with clarity. So please come up, Gabriel.
Industry standard is a year of warranty on the work after it's been complete.
But while you're there, sir, so just so that the, our audience knows, what we're talking about is inserting a fortified...
Brand new pipe inside of the old pipe.
Uh, say that again?
A brand new pipe inside of the old pipe.
And I think it's important to note what occurred in Turkey Creek, that devastation. So what we're doing is actually doing some proactive and, and, you know, preserving that pipe and perhaps giving it a longer lifespan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any, any additional questions, council? Deputy Mayor, any speaker cards?
No cards.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, sign.
Got a motion by Councilman Landerman.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Hammond. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. We're now on unfinished business. Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to appoint Kristen Lanzana to the at-large position on the Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage four zero. Congratulations, ma'am. Welcome to the Recreation Advisory Board. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. We're now on new business item number one. Uh, uh, and, and Mr. Morton, you're gonna present this item, but I, I, I just have to give out a shout out because I, you know, Deputy Mayor, I'm calling you out on this one, man. You, you were keen and, and your eyes saw the, the opportunity for really better negotiation skills. And, uh, I think Mr. Morton created the art of the deal by setting this as an example and moving forward. So go ahead, Mr. Morton, present this case because this, this is, uh, this is a success story in the way we're gonna conduct business, not only today, but for years to come.
Thank you, and thank you too, Deputy Mayor Jeffy, for, for always challenging us to, to think bigger, think better and, and find the efficiency. So, you know, this was pulled off the agenda, I think about a month ago, maybe, maybe a little longer than that. Uh, sent back to the drawing board to renegotiate, make sure the citizens of Palm Bay are getting the best deal. And to make a long story short, the result of the, of the new negotiations generates an additional two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to the City of Palm Bay over the life of the cell tower, uh, ground equipment lease. So, um, just outstanding work, work by the team to do that. And thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And, and, you know, Mr. Morton, just touch a little bit on, you know, moving forward, those negotiations, uh, for other companies. You know, set this precedence. I think that's, I, I think that's the key of what was accomplished by you and the staff.
I think, I think it's setting the precedent that, you know, we're advocating for the community, we're out there to make, you know, friends necessary with businesses. But I think the bigger piece is giving, we have an excellent, excellent, I mean, I've been doing this twenty-seven years. Uh, the best executive staff I've ever worked with, you guys are tremendous people before I even got here. But giving them the freedom and the space and the time to do this level of quality work is what we really need. And so as the pace ever increases, we'll definitely be trying to, um, push back a little bit just so we can prioritize and do our greatest work for the community, add public value. And so I think that's the other, the other part of the story is, uh, that needs to be told.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor, any comment cards?
Bill Batten.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Street, Southwest. When you went from fourteen thousand dollars a year coming in to thirty thousand dollars a year coming in, that's a significant jump. And all I can do is say Bravo Zulu, job well done. For those of military who know what BZ stands for, Bravo Zulu. But I, last night at planning and zoning meeting, I asked a specific question regarding the cell towers. I never got an answer back. For the Lotus development that's being proposed down on, by Bico, they had a site designated for a cell tower and one just across the street from them. So I asked the question last night, was Lotus Palms gonna be, reap the benefits from that tower? Or was it City of Palm Bay gonna reap the benefits of that tower? So I, I didn't get an answer, so I'm leaving that up for one more answer I might receive someday later. Thank you very much, but one more time, Bravo Zulu, job well done.
Thank you. Uh, any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ground lease with T-Mobile at Friendly Park.
I'll second. Motion by Deputy Mayor Jeffy, seconded by Mayor Medina. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passage four zero. We're now on item number two. Mr. Morton? New business item number two.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, all Mayor City Council. What you have here before you tonight is a request by the Sustainability, uh, Council to adopt, the Sustainability Advisory Board, excuse me, to adopt the revised Sustainability Action Plan. And, and per the current City Code of Ordinances, it is under the duties and responsibilities of the Sustainability Advisory Board to include identification and recommendations to the City Council concerning affordable strategies associated with conservation, renewable energy and energy efficiency. They also have to develop a plan, which you have enclosed in your packet tonight, develop an assessment to track those activities, review ordinances and policies that have an impact on the environmental conditions of the city. Uh, and there's several optional things that they, they can do. If you, uh, read through the plan, it's a couple of key components. Uh, the purpose that is stated is it's providing a foundation for guidance regarding sustainability and resiliency efforts in the City of Palm Bay. There is a timeline and responsibility attached that proposes that this plan is scheduled for implementation over the next five years, to be monitored and reviewed annually. And there is no, uh, implementation, resources, budget or person assigned currently to align to work those go, goals out. I know the Sustainability Advisory Board were diligent about to provide the report and I hope you've had an opportunity to, uh, review it.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor, these speaker cards.
Bill Batten.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. As people know, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. This is my nineteen eighty-eight comprehensive plan that I purchased from the City of Palm Bay when I moved here for five dollars. Why I bring that up was that was what the city had planned. And there's a very important segment in here that pertains to sustainability that we don't see in our current sustainable, our comprehensive plan. And that's under section, uh, FLU dash one point one LIMA. And what that states was you could build on a street one-third if you had no water in sewer. You could build, and if you got water, you could have another third of the street built upon. And if you got water in sewer, you could utilize the entire population within that street. Now, why was that important that they had a sustainability program built into the comprehensive plan? The city overlooked the, this criteria. The process was to maintain sus- sustainable water table, which meant low water draw and low septic interference going into the water table. Well, they didn't pay attention to that. Now the city has high-density communities with water ends, which they're provided, which they have to have in order to build. But each residential unit in these, in these housing developments is putting in a well. Every single one of them, and it's part of the houses being built. So you condense the population into a, into a tighter area and you've sunk more wells per acre than you had originally. Now, that's great for the people that have city water and city sewer available for them. They now have a well also to water their lawns. But where's the negative impact on that? It's the individuals that don't have the city water. Their, their water table is now depleted because these people have more wells. Right? As an effect, their systems are starting to fail at a higher rate. Unless the city's gonna start allowing, uh, providing water to the residents that don't have it, that's the responsibility on you. Right? So just remember, when you increase the density, but you still allow the natural, the draw from the water table, it has a negative impact on those that have to rely on it. And that's all of your scattered lots. And there's a lot of them that do not have city water. Thank you very much. Go back and look at some of the old plans. They weren't all bad, I promise you. And just for the fun of it, here's my receipt when I bought this, when I moved here for five dollars. I've been paying attention to you guys a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. John, uh, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, deny the Sustainability Action Plan.
Mayor?
Yes.
There is a presentation by the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Okay. Carry on, call them up. Who's making the presentation?
I believe it's Susan Conley.
Good evening, council. We are currently, thank you. We are currently the Palm Bay Sustainability Advisory Board. Our chair, Jessica Lovell, is sick this evening. We have prepared a, just a brief comment on the action plan. Um, I'd like to start it just with what is sustainability? Sustainability is a social goal for people to coexist on earth over a long period of time. Sustainability has three dimensions, environmental, economic and social. Our Sustainability Advisory Board was created in two thousand and eighteen to assist the City Council, the City Manager and the City Staff. Our members are appointed by the City Council concurrent with their terms. As I said, our current members are Jessica Lovell, Rebecca Sigler, excuse me, Jane Higgins and myself. Uh, the Sustainability Board members are involved in local groups such as the Florida Native Plant Society, Marine Resources Council and many others.
Um, yes, I, I love to do the cleanups when the city or, um, Keeper of Art Beautiful organizes them. Our current challenge is membership. Having three vacancies, we have failed form two times in the last year. With additional members, we could be, participate in more public education campaigns such as outreach and the educational component required of, uh, by, uh, phase two of the Florida DEP Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, also known as the Storm Water Management Plan. A big part of that is educating the public about things like water use and, um, using fresh well water to, um, water your lawn. Some resource, it's, uh, other communities have, um, it's your yard, but it's our water programs to assist with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, some of the projects that we have in progress are ride-alongs to see the current sustainability and environmental initiatives. I know, uh, Councilman Landerman has been on that. And I believe, uh, Councilman Jeffy also went on a ride-along. Uh, if you haven't, it's really fun. And I'd like to go with all those that have not gone on it, including the City Manager. We are looking at, uh, working with the landscape plans for Building E to suggest additional native plants. Uh, we are also have a native plant garden on site right here at City Hall near the police station. Uh, that is a community education project. We got funding in place from FPL, Conradina Native Plant Society, forty-five hundred dollars in fact. And this installation will be complete when Building E is complete, uh, after it's finished. We have, uh, had LID education to the Conradina Native Plant Society by Department, uh, Director, uh, the Growth, uh, the Growth, excuse me, by Lisa Fraser, Palm Bay Director of Growth Management. She did an excellent presentation. Nemo Garden is in the forefront, again with, uh, Councilman Hammer. And there are community citizens who are coming forth wanting cleanup and use of that property again. Uh, we are also collecting, citizens appear before the Citizens of Budget Advisory, uh, Citizens Advisory Board for actions that we can take before our city.
So the overview of the action plan, as City Manager mentioned, um, we've rewritten the whole thing lately in the last few months to make it a little more current and relevant. Um, it should be lasting about five years, which is pretty the normal timeframe for most municipalities. Um, we look to incorporate the Florida DEP MS four... Um, we look to incorporate the Florida DEP MS four matrix into our matrix because those goals are very integral to overall sustainability and the uh Sustainability Advisory Board is actually written into the Florida DEP MS four. So we realize that we have not done annual updates to the city council nor have our predecessors. Um, we're looking forward to doing that in the future and we'd love to get any feedback that you have on the action plan. Anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I appreciate all your efforts. I thank you for the hard work that you accomplished. Really appreciate everything you do on behalf of our citizens and our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna toss this to to council, um however, you know, the staff recommendation, I want to highlight on that. City manager discussion on efforts funding and strategy. So Mr. Morton, can you just give us a little bit of highlight of that? Because from what I see, when you start looking at the the action plan, it gives them a purpose on the plan, it gives them time, uh responsibility, resources and budget. Uh, so can you touch on those and and um what those discussions would be?
Yes, so my concern just in general with with any plans, goals or policies that we adopt, and I think I said this during during my interview, we don't want them just to be dust, bookends on a shelf. It needs to be robust discussions around implementation. Is it, is it, you know, can the organizational capacity handle the implementation? Is it creating public value? That's the first initial one we want to talk about. Secondarily is, do we have a staff person or persons assigned? There's some way practically to integrate that. Usually it comes down to allocations of staff resources. And lastly, do we have a budget? Is there any dollars currently? I did not assign any dollars in the budget to sustainability action per se or to the implementation of a plan. And so my concern in general was just, you know, if if we want to continue to have boards and commissions work from a management perspective, not from from a city government perspective, you know, without adopting allocations of resources that direct staff to enact those goals, policies, visions and a tying the budget to it, it will just be a bookend and nothing will happen. And so that I think was part of the the conversation missing for me is a plan is great. But if we're not willing to step up behind it and allocate resources and staff, then then we're not reciprocating the obligations of the um board or commission or advisory group is is giving to us, right?
So and and when you say staffing resources right there, what type of resources are we talking about? What what number are you estimating that?
Yeah, I don't have a number. Initially, it's going to be trying to assign staffs and look at the plan, dissected by what departmental umbrella or responsibility it could fall in. Also aligning with our strategies, goals and visions to see if there's any congruency for low-hanging fruit. I'm not, I don't think we have the capacity or enough to create additional programs or implement additional programs. So it's what works with we, you know, activities we're doing. And then partner with the groups again to see if there's if there's additional plans or goals. Can we get grant funding? Is that a resource we have time to do grant funding, grant management? So again, it's just trying to be genuine to the group saying, I don't know where it can go or how we can get there, but but sans those things, there's not a lot of action. Um, other than if we get lucky and things line up, uh um, you know, within within the plan. Um, you know, that stands reporting and some other, you know, consistent engagement. It just makes it really difficult to genuinely say, yes, thank you, we're gonna act on the plan.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm at a point where giving down things to to study like permeable concrete, right? What what benefit would that bring not only to to our city, but stormwater retention? Uh, at the same time, individuals, you know, can we promote that within development? You know, what, how can we, we use the that information? How could we use a board that's passionate to work towards uh goals of of communicating with with not only uh each and every council member, but at the same time with um our staff and those that want to invest in our city?
And that's a great question. And that I think is one of the most nuanced, the difficult and most disciplined activities of of leadership or management is saying no to a lot of really good ideas. So we can say yes to our best ideas and more importantly, say yes to our priorities, things that we know we need to pay attention to and um, you know, that's the other challenge I think we're just facing as a city as we've got a lot of of core priorities. We just got to be careful how much bandwidth we expend if we're not willing to to dedicate additional resources to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen.
So I'll raise my motion to
Hold on, he he had a question. Carry on, councilman.
So I know we have staffing concerns when it comes to items like this and I do get that, but we do have a board of free people working on things. Um, I feel that we can move from from um coming up with a plan like this and having to spend um the resources that we have and actually working together to give them actions to do. For instance, we got something really good tonight from Judy. Um, it would be amazing to be able to give this to the Sustainability Board and have them report that back to us. Um, these are things where the more we grow, the more we're going to be making an impact on our community. We should also be good stewards to it. Um, I would really like to see this possibly tabled to have a have more of a discussion about it to where we can come up with a plan that makes our Sustainability Board more more potent to where they're not really coming up with just things. We're giving them items to bring to us. Because we are very, 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 very busy. I know our staff is very busy. We have things to do every single day. I think we have a opportunity here for them to study the things that we might not have the time to study. And we might not be able to say, hey, we're gonna do it, but guess what? We have the knowledge at our fingertips to know if this thing's gonna work or not. Where, I I mean, I do understand committing to a plan is gonna cost money and right now it's needs to be infrastructure, roads, um fire, police, everything that we hold accountable to our community. But I also believe this is an amazing start and we have a new vibrant team. Um, I'm gonna be appointing somebody to give them um somebody else tonight. Um, I would really like to see this decision be held back and we start giving them things to do. Because I do think we have a very, very untapped resource for information to us. Because I I've, I had my, I had my town hall, I had about fifty people there. And I have, I have a lot of people that that are extremely interested in moving better and uh safer, more more uh positive way with our community. So um, it's always up to you guys, but I think we have an untapped resource and we can be giving them things to look at. And just their reports are reports back to us on what they find.
Yeah, that that's exactly why.
I love the idea whether we we have to commit to something. I'm not sure about the committal.
Yeah.
But I I absolutely one hundred percent support them doing their reports and bringing it back to us. Because they do have a voice in me. And whether whether whatever happens tonight, I'm always going to be the speaker for that.
Well, well, Councilman Hammer, that's exactly what we were talking about and giving them, you know, targeted like I I just mentioned permeable concrete, right? And and how that relates to our surface war. Along that same vein, I hear what our city manager is saying. Uh, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go down this path, let's give them some teeth. What are we doing? Are we gonna have them try and go with grants, right? Targeted grants and then are we gonna invest in that? Because grants are typically, uh, we have to invest in grants. They're not always a hundred percent. So um, so I see that as well. But um, to your point, uh, the fact that we have a motivated group of citizens that are passionate about this where it is part of our growth, it always needs to be considered. So yeah, I I agree with you in that sense, brother. I I think uh these young ladies, uh, and yes, I I call you young. Um, they give so much of their time and their efforts to our citizens that um we should be giving them goals and objectives and then backing that up if we were serious about it. So to to both your points, I'm I'm in agreement. So uh, I I think I'll need a motion either way, uh, at this point.
Okay, mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the Sustainability Action Plan as written.
A second. Okay, I'm gonna motion by Councilman Landerman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Okay, um, so to to your points as well, there are some great points and and as conservatives, we still care about the environment. We do it in a certain way. This may be different uh than other ways. For example, our state representative just did a great job bringing a million dollars back for the Indian River Lagunit. So there's ways that you do it. Um, and and we've already had the conversation on whether to keep the board or not. We're keeping them. So I agree, we should give them something to do. However, the action plan before us that we're voting on tonight um has some some serious concerning verbiage in some of the section sections of it. So that's why I want to uh not move forward with the action plan that we have in front of us. But the ideas that were brought up by the mayor and Councilman Hammer of giving, you know, addition, you know, projects for them to go do um on the basis that it doesn't take additional bandwidth and resource from the city, that's fine. But what we're talking about tonight is the action plan itself. Uh, some of the concerning language just from briefly looking at it, um, commit to becoming a solar smart designated community by dedicating a staff member to improve solar market conditions. Uh, that's, there's a lot of stuff about the city focusing on its carbon emissions. Uh, is our police and our fire departments gonna be worried about uh how much carbon emissions they're gonna be emitting when they respond to calls? Uh, they want to put charging stations in the city hall. Do we know what powers most of our county? Most of our county is powered by coal and liquid natural gas. There's actually a great study done um comparing Germany and France. One uses all nuclear power and one uses all coal power. And all the electric cars in Germany actually produce more carbon emissions being hooked up to the power grid from the coal that had to be burned to power the cars than if they had just driven gas cars. So uh, there's a lot of concerns that I have with this action plan. Again, there's been some great ideas brought up by everyone tonight. But I'm gonna make this motion and and I hope you'll support me to just not move forward with this particular action plan.
Would you consider just removing those things and and redirecting those?
No, mayor, they can come back with a different plan or they can or we can not have a plan that the city is held to and go with the idea of giving them individual projects to work or them coming with individual projects to work on. I think would probably be a better idea. That especially if the city manager says, well, we're gonna pass a plan, but it might just end up sitting on the shelf. Then why are we passing a plan to that regard anyways? But I'm not opposed to them bringing back the projects, but I just, I don't, I think there's too much in the plan for us to nitpick one or, you know, start nitpicking items.
Okay, Mr. Morton, how did uh, did they work out the, I mean, because it does look aggressive, right? That's the first thing. Uh, trying to hone in, did, did they come up with all this, this on themselves or was it just uh?
We should ask them, the justice, I wasn't here.
Well, I think I can't at this point.
The idea of the plan, can we, can we direct a question? At this point, I think it was the mayor's question. Because I don't know, I don't have the history.
Okay.
Yes.
We're the backside, you can direct that question.
Okay. Did you, did you all come up with this plan? Each and every item?
Um, we looked at the prior plan and incorporated a lot of the new ideas going on in the world of sustainability. It's really meant to be um a list of ideas and options, not that we would be going forth and implementing every single one because as you mentioned, they would have to be considered and weighed in terms of is it, is there going to be a cost? Is that feasible for us? We haven't gone through that process yet or even really prioritizing them, what would be a year one plan out of those. Um, I think year one was meant to be incorporate the Florida DEP MS four because those things are right now something that is getting done and has to get done. And then kind of expand from there to see what the staff is willing to think about.
Okay. Okay, right now, uh, the, is that any other questions while I have them? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, my my issue is I love the permeable concrete uh thought process and and the benefit of that. That's just one example. What Judy showed is uh Councilman Hammer said that that's another example where he could focus these these issues on with the Turkey Creek. So perhaps come back and bring uh that institute those kind of plans, targeted um to see how, you know, because we've been talking about permeable concrete. I know for four years I've been talking about permeable concrete, right, at least. So I I think maybe we we choose and pick and then some thought process with that, but to Councilman Hammer's or Councilman Landerman's uh point, there are some things here that, you know, maybe condense it as opposed to wasting time on those items. Right? Um, we do have a charging station here on the at the city hall, Councilman Landerman, just so that you know, it's right outside those doors. Uh, for for that discussion, but thank you. We have a motion right now um to deny and a second by Councilman Jaffe to deny the plan, not the board. So I'm gonna call the questions.
Mayor, if I can get the discussion.
I didn't, I didn't see the.
Yeah, usually for motion, second guy gets to go just because his comments, so. Um, anyway, I, you know, I love the passion. I'm so excited to see Palm Bay residents, you know, doing something they love and serving the community. I, you know, I've been pretty vocal about where I stand on advisory boards and I I still don't support most advisory boards, including including this one. Um, you know, I I I feel like it's a symbolic board and I feel like a lot of proposals are already dressed and some of the departments that we have making some of the boards and put redundant um redundant. For example, you know, the land, land development code already has low-impact development uh standards within that code. The Florida Building Code already sets the standard for Florida efficiency. Like, we have the highest efficiency that can be achieved really through um through insulation and mechanical processes. Most building material products are recycled. Concrete's forty percent recycled material, material, drywall is recycled material. Uh, the idea of a floating wetland is it seems kind of cool, but the trees are the the product that was discussed and put on that is old, it's an invasive species, can't be planted in Florida. There's discussion of of reducing nitrogen in the canals, believe it or not, our grass that grows in our canals is nitrogen-reducing. I don't remember the term of the actual grass. There's four or five different grasses that grow in our canals and one of them is already nitrogen-reducing. Um, there's discussion of adding trees uh for canopies over sidewalks. Well, if you drive around Bayside Lakes now, you'll see those trees are all uprooting curbs, curbs and sidewalks creating uh injuries and ADA uh issues throughout our, throughout our city. Um, I know the mayor's passionate about purgy's concrete. I've someone that's poured concrete since I was fifteen years old. I have a lot of experience with purgy's concrete. If it's not done right, it can be a major headache. And the biggest problem with purgy's concrete is it's never maintained properly. So it never fully um functions the way it's intended to. Um, in my opinion on on boards, as they're volunteers, unelected officials, yet they often share conversations on multimillion dollar dollar issues of climate and land use, utility expansion, environmental regulation. The influence these boards have to bypass voter accountability in many cases conflicts with the needs of the broader community. Um, the biggest issue that that Mr. Morton brought out is there's no budget attached to it. Um, and so for all those reasons that I mentioned, I I won't be supporting this tonight or or in the future and hope that our boards go away. Thank you.
Okay.
May I say one?
Go ahead, ma'am.
First, I want to compliment all of you for reading the plan. The second thing I want to say is it's a piece of paper. As Mr. Batten pointed out, when they did the first comprehensive plan, sustainable, good ideas were put into that plan that went by the wayside precisely for what is happening here tonight. There has been no conversations like this between our boards, this board and you all. We are in, we are not in two thousand and eighteen. We are in twenty twenty-five. We've got new issues, new priorities. I'm in total agreement that we need to be in line with the budget with the the top priorities. Um, but I think you arrive at that through this type of interaction. So I don't see going back and revising. So I don't see going back and revising this plan right now until we have a, a conversation, some way of revitalizing not only the Sustainability Board, but all the boards. We all need to look at the mission and the task, they need to be task oriented, we need to deliver. And it's good to ask, too. And I want to compliment you, Councilman Landry, for being specific and making it clear that your comments have to do with this plan, but not with the board. They are two different things. So I would like to encourage you, let's take our eyes off the plan right now and go with what Mr. Morgan is saying needs to happen. We need to make us vital, so we don't have this discussion again in the future.
Okay, right now I got a motion by Councilman Landry, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, signify by saying nay. Nay. We're now on item number three. So gentlemen, let me just start by, and I understand the, the sense about boards, but this to me is a little different. First and foremost, I truly believe that, I've been talking about a forensic audit for years now, where we're talking about, I, I spoke about an IG audit, so now we're talking about operational audits. So I, I'd like to discuss establishing a citizens accountability task force. Now, this is unlike anything we've done. What I believe in our, in our county is we have individuals that have dissected budgets. We've got individuals that live in, that work in NASA, that are part of huge budgets. And I think what we've done is we've actually handcuffed ourselves by not allowing individuals that live outside of the city serve on these budgets, right? They, we have so many experts. Look, you have individuals like from SpaceX that, you know, when they came up with the thought process of landing a rocket that once it goes into space down on a barge in the middle of the ocean, everybody thought they, they were really shooting for the stars, which they were, and, and, and yet they did it, right? So this is, and I'm just gonna bring this up, the basic membership criteria of this establishment would be five to seven board members to serve at large. Members should have specific financial expertise and/or accounting degrees. Members would not be required to be city residents, but it's okay if they work, right? Again, it's, it's based on their qualifications. Members would provide input on city's budget, financial insights, and I believe the industry's best practices because they are, we're targeting their expertise. So this citizens accountability task force would serve as an advisory body in the sunshine to Palm Bay City Council and our city manager and his staff, right? Its purpose is to provide informed community input on the development of city's annual budget and to enhance transparency, to enhance our trust and the public engagement in the entire budget process. The CATF would likely meet from January through June under the floor sunshine and be open to the public. Another opportunity for the public not only to engage, but to have public comments, which is important within our communications with our, our community. They will review proposed annual operating capital budgets presented by the city manager. They will evaluate the budget priorities and provide feedback on that alignment with community needs and strategic goals. So their input would, would give them that opportunity to make recommendations for change, augmentation of delivery method, or purpose of elimination of city services, programs, or operators, kind of like a Doge effort, you know? They would make recommendations based on those budget priorities, cost-saving opportunities, revenue strategies, capital project planning, desirability of alternate service provisions, contracting as an example. I know that we've had citizens talk about, do we, do we staff this or do we contract it? So I'd like for them to have that type of team, you know, again, it's more of a task force where they engage. Now, this is key, gentlemen, the city will review the committee's effectiveness and scope after the first year. So this is something that we've never gotten down this page, but we've given this an opportunity, right? And then, and then again, every three years to determine if the task force should continue on or determine and direct any adjustments that may be needed on a timely basis, right? That's on this dais to, to determine. The council may extend revise or sunset the committee based on their performance, based on the fact that, are they producing or, or they're not. And I wanted to also highlight that city council, city manager, manager shall not be bound by any recommendations of the task force as the city council and community retain the ultimate budget, budget authority. So I present this before you gentlemen, for discussion, and I'd like to get your feedback. However, do we have any comments, Deputy Mayor?
We do. Yeah, Butch Oran.
Butch Oran, two nineteen Trent Avenue. You know, as we sit in the audience and listen to this, we just heard probably a twenty minute discussion about boards, and half the council wants them, other half doesn't. So this is just another name for a board, you're calling it a task force, but they're gonna give you guys advice. And that's what we elected you guys for, is to represent us. And I think that's where it needs to come from, is you guys and the staff that we already have on the panel. And you're saying outsiders can come in. I just, I don't know if I agree with that or not, so. I just, I think it's just another name for a board, but you're gonna call it a task force. And I just personally, I don't think it's a good idea, thank you.
No more cards, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So discussion, gentlemen, I guess I'll need a motion.
Well, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, I think it's a great idea.
I'll second it. Any discussion, Councilman Landry?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, Mayor, I appreciate you, you bringing this up and the hard work that you put into it. And I think, you know, fiscal accountability and responsibility is incredibly important. We need that moving forward, we've had a lot of conversations about that. And, and I do agree that, you know, I, I understand the concern about going outside of the city, but sometimes, you know, sometimes there's really good people that can help out, and they don't live in the, the city of Palm Bay. But my only challenge to the council would be, I think this is a very, very serious board, if you compare it to all the other boards. I would say it's probably the most serious, and, and we should really go out of our way and take time to find very serious board candidates to, to put on this board.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you for the motion. Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Thank you, gentlemen. There's, just a lot of moving parts that are happening. We have a brand new city manager that's been on the job less than a year, and I can understand there may be some PTSD from, from some of the council members from previous management. I, I honestly feel like we need to give our, our team a chance before we continue to add layers upon layers. The new CFO of Florida plays in Goliath, is an acting of FAFO board, which is its version of the Dodge board, or the Doge, Doge program. And we're also having the charter review commission look at possibly bringing in an auditor, auditor general to be presented to us and to the, to the voters. And so how many layers, how many layers do we need? I struggle with this most specifically because, you know, I manage a business with a quarter, you know, two hundred fifty million dollar budget and employees with multiple layers of, you know, human resources, procurement, all sorts of different facets of the business. So I don't need to be advised on how to operate a budget or how to look at a budget. You guys should have the same experience somewhat that I do, and not have to listen to advisory boards to tell us how to vote. So, you know, I don't, I don't not support this in any way, and I don't think any of you guys should either. I think it's gonna be a huge waste of time on staff's part, and it's just more things that we're gonna have to talk about and disagree on with, with these advisory boards. We should be working the staff and our own experience to establish and maintain a budget that is, you know, firm and effective, so. That'll close.
Thank you. Councilman Hammer?
I agree with what Chandler said, I agree with what the mayor said, and I also agree with what Mike said to a point. I do think our city has gone through a time where we have lost the public's trust. And I, one of my biggest things that I, that I feel every single time that I think about anything is how each one of these people that are on here are gonna help educate the citizens in this city on how things actually work. I, I'm always going to be behind the citizen board. I think the voice of the people is what we should be listening to every time we sit down in these chairs. So I am going to be in support of this, but I would like to see some of the things, I'm sure we're gonna talk about it again. So I would like to see some things, like who appoints the people that go up there, how are they selected, things like that. But I do love the idea, and I'm gonna support the idea, but I also, you know, I'm not the smartest guy in the world. I know a lot about a few things, but I would love to have input from somebody else that might know a little bit more about something than me. And if, if I can get volunteers that are gonna go out of their way, volunteer their time to do this, I'm going to be behind it, because we, we, we definitely need to earn our public's trust back. And them having a say, them having a hand in bringing our city back to, to the city that us five believe it is, I think this is a good start.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me just say, I brought this up for discussion, number one, because I'm, I'm thinking outside the box. But to, to your point, if we believe that we've all arrived, that we're all knowledgeable, and we don't want to take input from our citizens, that, that's, that's a bad place to be in, and, and I never want to be in a place like that, right? That, that being said, I also wanted to share with you, if we would have had operational audits or like that IG, I know that the public would already be very informed. It's the public process where they can come and speak, right? They have the opportunity to share their thoughts on, on the budget process more, not only with the task force, but with ourselves at the same time. So I, I don't want to ever think that it's not just about us digging into the budget. Our community should have a say as well, and I believe this task force is, although experimental, because we're looking for individuals that are expertise, their expertise in budgets and accounting degrees, and they don't have to be confined to the city. This may not be successful. It's an idea that I believe that we should go downrange, but if council so chooses not to go downrange, I understand. I'm just trying to work on different things where the public can be engaged, and we're receiving a thought process from other individuals that may have better ideas on the budget. So there's no, no harm if you guys don't want to go down this range. I just believe this is a way of thinking outside the box, to give it a different name. Yes, a task force, I understand it may rub people a different way, but at the same time, we're giving them a little bit of teeth, right? That we're, we're not, we're asking them to, to look at opportunities that you could cut here and, and see what, what you think is better. And having that dynamic conversation with city staff and our community at the same time, maybe something in the middle can come out and something positive be, that's all I'm saying. Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Yeah, just for a point of clarity, and, you know, maybe you misunderstood me when, you know, about the residents not having a voice. We, we have a whole budget season with budget workshops where the residents can come out and speak as much as they want. We also have email addresses and phone numbers, and I'm willing to have conversations at any time, any time of the day. But the other point is, is like, I don't care about input from people who don't live within the confines of the city of Palm Bay. If they're not resident, I don't need to hear from you. You know, I've, I've done an incredible amount of time, invested my time in write-alongs, talked to different directors. Is the task force gonna do that? Are they gonna know the true intimate needs that's going on within every department within the city? I don't, I don't see how they can find the time and advise us on the things that we should be doing our homework on and research on and asking hard questions of the staff. I don't need a board to tell me how to do that, so that's just the point I'm trying to make. I love the open public conversation, I love the budget season. I wish more than one person would come up and speak from the podium about our budget, but unfortunately, that's where we're at.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. I, I still stand this as a discussion, I think it's an opportunity for us to explore. And just because they're not citizens doesn't mean that they wouldn't want to serve a, a community if they have the knowledge. I find sometimes people want to serve that are not within the borders of, of the city of Palm Bay. But that being said, I got a motion by Councilman Landry, and I got a second by Mayor Medina, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Pass is three to one. Now, we're, we're going to item number four, gentlemen, but before we do, I, I just have to, I, I want to poll because I, I know that my name's on this, but the reality of it is, Councilman Johnston made the motion. Yes, I seconded the motion, yes, I brought this up for discussion at our last meeting. Unbeknownst to me, I didn't know Councilman Johnston wasn't gonna be here. Now, whatever you may think, Councilman Johnston is the longest tenured councilman on this dais, and I think he, he's earned the right to, to be heard. I would want to hear and have an opportunity to, to hear from him directly. So I would, I would ask that council consider that we move this item to when he's here, so that we could hear from him. So I, I would just need, you know, kind of like a consensus if.
Yeah, I mean, he's not missing a beating for an emergency. We have a quorum, so my, my recommendation for me would be to continue move forward with this, with this item. I agree with Deputy Mayor.
So what, what I see here is an opportunity that is just gonna fail at this point, so. So what I'm, I'm, either way, and let me, let me go, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to this point since I'm, we're speaking on this. So at last meeting, I, I put in a motion to reconsider. The reconsideration of issues previously acted upon is discouraged. If a council member, this is seven point nine point one four. If a council member decides to have an issue reconsidered that has been acted upon within the past year, the council member must first approach council with a request to reconsider the item. A majority vote of the city council is required for the item to subsequently come back to a meeting and reconsideration. That's exactly what occurred last meeting. Now, today, if I withdraw or if the motion fails, I'll need to, I'll need to get approval to reconsider again, so I'm withdrawing the item at this point. I'm gonna need to get a, a reconsideration of the item when we have a full council, so I'm withdrawing the item. We are now on council.
I just had a question for the attorney, if there's an agenda item, how can that be polled without council discussion?
Withdrawing his item is, if you think about it, it's somewhat similar, not exactly where we had this whole discussion item of chickens before the item was actually here. The actual reconsideration was brought by the mayor in his, is his item, just as if any of you decided, I want to put this ordinance on, but you know, I've talked to the residents, they don't think it's a good idea, I want to take this ordinance off. You can withdraw your item, now, if you wanted to table, he would need your permission to table or to continue it to another date, but he can't withdraw an item that he brought forth, and he did bring forth the reconsideration. He cannot bring it back for a consideration without getting additional vote from you all, because you all have to approve any reconsideration. He can take it back without your, your vote, but he can't bring it back without having another vote.
And Councilman Johnston brought this reconsideration, correct?
I thought it was mayor.
No, negative, sir, I brought up the reconsideration.
Mr. Johnson.
And I asked for a motion, and he agreed, and he made the motion, and I seconded.
So the reconsideration was by Councilman Johnston, he made the initial motion.
I'll check, I thought it was mayor that asked.
No, I, I put it on the agenda. No, I I put it on the agenda.
The clerk, uh Deputy Clerk is gonna check.
Okay, so it was uh Mayor Medina that asked for the reconsideration. The motion was made by um Councilman Johnson.
So wait, Johnson had to remove the, remove the item?
No, I put it on the agenda. I didn't know that um I asked for it to be put on the agenda. I didn't know that Councilman Johnson wasn't gonna be here.
Yeah, the item, the item currently is under Mayor Medina's name.
I had no idea at the time that he wasn't gonna be here. I thought he'd be here. So we're now on council reports. Councilman Langivan?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh so and I I only have one, one item I wanna bring up, and it is a little bit relevant to the citizens accountability task force. As I I I agreed with a lot of you tonight, um I actually didn't disagree with a single thing that the deputy mayor said. Um but Hammer brought up an amazing point, uh and that's exactly why I I wanted to go with that item. Uh and this is gonna lead up to what I'm about to say, so I'm not trying to revisit the past. But uh we we do, we do have a trust issue uh with the residents of Palm Bay because of past administrations and past things. And residents who are not new to the area have been here for a long time, um are still really, it it's almost like, you know, no matter what you do, they're just gonna believe that that the city is corrupt somehow just because of what happened in the past. So I wanna do, you know, whatever we can in our power right now to open it up to the people and to show them the good things that we're trying to do. Every member, I know every member of this council uh is righteous and benevolent. They're here trying to do the right thing. Uh I'm actually incredibly impressed with this council when we go to some of these events um in other parts of the state and I see how other councils are. I feel very blessed to be on this council. Uh and and I think it's initiatives like the citizens accountability task force will allow other residents to come in um and be able to inform, give us ideas and show what we're trying to do. But then to my item for council reports that I wanna pull on that's relevant, uh that I was going to bring up anyways before noticing this is um I I kinda reached out informally already um to the chief financial officer because he's doing great work around the state of Florida. But I was wondering if we could get a consensus from council to uh allow the city to send a formal letter to our new chief financial officer and the Florida Doge to invite them to, you know, to come and do what they need to do and and open up and be completely open and transparent with what we're doing here.
I I would definitely agree with that, and I'll I'll sign that letter. Do we have a thumbs up everywhere? Okay. Does that conclude your report? Uh Councilman Hammer?
Okay, I would like to appoint Eileen Sepp to the Sustainability Advisory Board. I would like to appoint Daniel Van Deveet to Infrastructure Advisory and Oversight Board. And I would like to remove Patrick McNally from the citizen um board with our TPO and appoint David Wills. And also, uh I got to meet with the great kids of Chris McCollum, and I gave them uh, I gave them the time to come up with one thing they wanted to change in Palm Bay. And they went around and they talked for a while. I mean, you know, you know, a few things were what I drive and other things like that, but they wanna raise some canes. So so the kids of Chris McCollum want to raise some canes here in Palm Bay. Um and my last thing is, I have, I had a great town hall um about our Turkey Creek. I had about fifty people there. We came up with amazing things. And um I I was just super excited for everybody to come out, hear the voices of everybody, hear what the state or the Sustainability Board is doing and some of the things we could do in the future. And I am so, so, so blessed for everybody that came out. Um I do plan on doing one every single month on something different. So um you will be seeing a town hall every single month on something that um is going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Thank you. I have a couple of things, a couple ordinances I'm I'm looking to bring uh to council in the future. Not sure if you noticed tonight, but for example, when the Sustainability Advisory Board was making their presentation, there was no clock. Um so I'm looking to bring in ordinance um to a future meeting that will put a limit on public hearing items now located within the land development code and also presentations under new business. Um also gonna be looking to bring in ordinance forth during non-agenda public items that limits the speakers to Palm Bay residents, Palm Bay business owners, landowners in Palm Bay, or anybody that's receiving utilities from the city. That concludes my my report.
Okay, so just so I understand, you, in other words, only Palm Bams?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So uh does that conclude your report? Okay, my report's more on uh what Butch spoke about earlier today, Purple Heart Day. Um and I just wanna let you know that uh this Sunday at one o'clock in Merritt Island by the Veterans Museum, they'll be honoring seven of our uh countywide Purple Heart recipients. For those of you that are wanting to attend, it is open to the public. Uh the uh Purple Heart chapter locally is honoring those seven uh heroic members and and it's uh worth your while on a Sunday afternoon to visit individuals that really paid the ultimate sacrifice on the sun. And a lot of them have scars that are not even visual today. Uh but seven individuals that are Purple Heart recipients will be honored this Sunday at one o'clock at the Maryland Museum, Veterans Museum in Maryland. And that concludes my reports. Uh Mr. Moore, any reports from you, sir?
Just three items real quick. Uh make thank you. I know we have a great, you know, new public works after here, but Matt Christine Sullivan has been amazing for a really long time. She's taking a much needed vacation. Hopefully I'm not out again. But we're gonna have a celebration when she comes back of of her uh gift of service to the city, and I will invite y'all to come. Thank you so much, Christine, for everything you've done and you continue to do and sit here through through these meetings. I really appreciate you, as I know how all the staff does. I think the uh, thank you. I think the first copy with the city manager went went well. We're having a second one. I think we had twenty seven or twenty people come. It was a great time of conversation and loved the engagement. We'll be doing those in the uh uh City Manager Podcast is launching soon just to get more communication and an insight into, you know, what we do here day to day and to share and open up to our residents. And on a very sad note, um I will not be here for the next council meeting. Uh but we will have Deputy City Manager Juliette Miscony taking over. My wife is uh overdue for a surgery. And as you could imagine, the only day, we're on the, we're on the waiting list. Hopefully move it up with the only day possible, apparently with the surgeon is the twenty first. So um uh I won't be here, but we're making plans to try to be here. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware.
Well, Godspeed to you and and your lovely wife, sir. Ms. Smith, any reports?
Yes, council. I have uh one item. A few uh uh council meetings ago, we were discussing the school zone cameras, and it did come up that my office and police were working to uh move on from the cameras. At this point, we have come up with some terms for which, you know, the city and RESP may be able to go their separate ways. We're going to need to memorialize those terms, and what I'm asking is that council would delegate authority to the city manager so that when we get the contract so that we can actually uh terminate the RESP uh camera that uh contract with RESP that the city manager will be able to sign that termination. So I'm asking council to um delegate that authority. Otherwise, we'd have to bring it back, but that would allow for this to uh process to occur more quickly.
You got a thumbs up for me. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Your report. Okay, this meeting's adjourned.